He was gonna say something.
It's like we be in Jameson. We're talking, I mean, interrupting each other, I gotta say, because I forget.
I'm more just like, what, what, what?
The folks that we live in, we see our coaches. Uh, looking around the street, our kids will go there and they can follow.
So you have Merle who can't have rain, or Apple can't.
Well, he has a team of seventy-six. Granted, they're so small. Fifty-six, I leave there.
Spent five days in my mother's house, and she bought a new, she bought. She didn't make it fix it up, so she ate it, but. Kill her. Oh, my God.
Um. Yeah, it just don't.
Your best.
He's a little bit, I mean, I hope that it's weak, and it's really important.
Yeah, right.
I want to wait, yeah.
No, we have.
I brought the little one to my kid. To sign up stuff up the streets. And oh, she thought it was so good. Then she tried to me on it.
It's important. Now, looks like so.
It's really hard to get a couple of years. It's like your body's. Sometimes water, Frank. It's a hundred. Well, that's there, that's okay. We get a call tomorrow. Uh, no, we're waiting. This is a little way where we have this thing that we want. Okay, so.
Uh, first of all.
I responded.
Just like a pressure, my lungs feel like queed out.
Seems like more just coming to the east end. They already had it all right up, I had the fans down.
It's like, I've gone somewhere now, it sounds like, I don't know, just something I could do.
Yeah, it was amazing.
I don't really participate.
But, yeah.
You can't hide.
No, not there. No. It's been a while. I couldn't see out. Because you know, you know, the dogs. It's just got a bit of a taste. I put some news, and then I go. I watched the news, and I go.
What can I do? So.
Oh, I mean, India, China, and Bali. Yeah, um, that's actually, that was. This is a good. One of them. Yeah. I, I, I look in the back, and I'm saying, I think he's better than. The show, seven forty hours.
Yeah.
Call for any orders?
You can, well, you need this. I, I, I say it from there.
Oh, that's all. Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Herney.
Here.
Ms. Bryant.
Here.
Mr. Thorne.
Here.
Ms. Bow.
Here.
Six trustees present, we've got a forum, we've got a meeting. Okay, next item is the approval of the minutes to, uh, be approved on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, motion suffered.
I move both.
Second.
Moved by both, seconded by thrust, born. And any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes, January twenty-first. All right. Okay, additions or deletions or corrections, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six affirmative, no negative, motion so carries. Uh-huh. Uh, President's report, the first item we've got this evening is the civility pledge, and the next one on the line is Ms. Thomas.
In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Thanks.
President Pickett, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to move item twelve D one up to the present time.
A second.
Moved by, yeah, and seconded by both, to amend the agenda and move item twelve D one, yeah, approved with higher to current position on the agenda, so we've got it later. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? Not affirmative, no negative motion, so carries, we will amend the agenda. Chief?
I, I actually mean approve Anthony's hiring in January meeting, but now we're gonna officially swear him in. Uh, Anthony's twenty-nine years old, currently employed by the village of Norwich. He lives in Norwich, and he exhibits an exuberant desire to start his career in law enforcement with the village. He served as auxiliary officer with the village of Homewood Park, security at Harlem Irving Company, as anybody who grew up near the city knows, where Harlem Irving is at. And is a transportation screening officer for the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. I'm convinced he would be a good asset to our department, and our plan is starting the academy March twenty-ninth, which is his birthday. Good day to start the academy.
Forget that one. Shouldn't. Motion, the motion.
Well, we already did that in January.
Okay, also, we're just swearing.
Meet and greet.
Again, here's where you're going, huh? With your right hand, repeat everything. I, take your name.
Hi, Anthony Algrady.
Having been duly appointed to the position of patrol officer of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
Have you been appointed to the village of Patrol Officer of Sleepy Hollow?
Think, uh, Illinois, you solemnly swear the devil, support the Constitution of the United States.
And county duly swear, point the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of Illinois.
The ordinances of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
The ordinance of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of patrol officer to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge the.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of patrol officer to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge, uh, patrol officer to the best of my ability.
Welcome to the village, and sorry about the curveball coming at us. Always a fall well. My, my.
That's all we can say.
Got it, got it, got it, unless you got a couple of lines. Okay, I want to. One thing the president has to report is that we did receive a communication delivered to the village of, concerning the petition about sixteen oh-one West Main. Village Board does not have the vehicle to send those petitions to at this point. That is the P and Z meeting next week. We will forward that information to them for their consideration. Just to give them notice that, uh, this board should be in a neutral position on that situation at this point, so. Any of those communications should go to P and Z and not us.
What's your next meeting?
Uh, P and Z has one coming up the tenth of February, Barb will give you the. All right, uh, I believe that's it for the President's report, collection report, I have no report tonight. All right, thank you, Paul. Planning and zoning, Mrs. Detmer is with us via Zoom, Mrs. Detmer.
Yes, good evening, everyone, um, two items for the P E Z C is, President Pickett mentioned, next Monday night, February tenth at five thirty, there will be a public hearing held. The proponent Timothy James is, um, requesting a special use for, uh, self-storage facility, um, with three variances. That information will be in its entirety to, uh, use the board hopefully for the next meeting after the Planning and Zoning Commission holds its public hearing and makes its, um, findings of facts and, and recommendations to you folks. The second item is the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to be holding a special meeting on Friday morning, February twenty-first at ten a.m. with the business owners to get their input on signage and lighting and that type of thing to try and assist, uh, as we made the bodifications to the sign ordinance. And that's it.
Fine. You've got exciting times ahead.
Yes, we do.
Okay, Attorney's Report.
The word for Mr. President.
Chester, Andrew Henry for Mr. Steele.
Uh, the last board meeting, the last one I was at, is, I mentioned, I was, uh, the, uh, cost estimations for the de-call replacement along uh, hill crest and throw bread out here. Um, I was hoping to get that over Kyle the last couple of weeks, however, I've been waiting to hear back from a supplier, or it's to cost estimations for uh, pre-cast call, that's not very bad for me yet, so, uh, my next board meeting, I should ask you, maybe that without, through the costs, just, I want to be more different.
All right. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Uh, Director of Finance, Mr. Van.
Request a motion for the approval of the accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thor, seconded by Thomas, to approve the accounts payable for February third, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Additions, deletions, comments or questions? I see the first sign of spring is in there, though. We purchased the village stickers for twenty-five, twenty-six. They're in there, folks. Okay, no, uh, comments or questions, additions or deletions, hold call, please. Ms. Bow.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Herney.
Aye.
Six primary votes, no negative votes, a motion so carries, thank you all.
Um, the first draft of the employee handbook has been passed off to Mr. Schuster and, uh, Chief Parha, who are reviewing it. Get it back from them, I'll, uh, um, make the updates, and we'll move that project forward. Um, there was a crash at Lucas and Willen that damaged the sign and, um, some fencing and stuff like that, I got a call from the insurance company that they're getting us a check for that. Um, the budget for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-six is in process, um, Chief, I mean, maybe this, uh, this request and, um, request are due, uh, Friday. Uh, since I last talked to you, we got a call from, um, Westland D saying that, uh, Windows ten is being phased out in October of this year, and he, you know, like, several computers that, uh, you might need the standards of Windows eleven, so they have to be replaced. So that's gonna be about a fifteen thousand dollar debt.
Yes.
So. Um, I M O forecast for, uh, income is all down pretty much from what you know, we had, uh, have been receiving, so we'll hopefully the, uh, the forecast will improve as we get a little bit closer. And the good news is that I've been in contact with, uh, people at Deco, the, um, and our two hundred thousand dollar grant has been approved, and she has submitted it for payment, so the check is in the mail.
Well, well, be on me.
Yeah, so that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Eugene, appreciate it. Uh, okay, we have the sound to public comments. Pete Vernon. Mr. Vernon.
You do follow along. Well. Okay. Pete Vernon, liberal or not. Locust Drive, you're living in the village for twenty-two years. At fifty years' experience in engineering construction. Last twenty-three years, primarily in code interpretation and enforcement. Have served as a building official and code consultant in several municipalities, clients involved in new construction, renovation, and development. I know that the documents I, I handed out to you are gonna be submitted also to the planning commission when they have the public hearing on February tenth, and the process of circulating the petition regarding the current special use application for sixteen oh-one Main that President Pickett just mentioned. And I am requesting the petition language be included into the board meeting minutes tonight. Since January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, we collected over a hundred and fifty signatures on this petition. The language reads, "The undersigned residents of the village of Sleepy Hollow wish to express to the board trustees and the board president in the strongest possible terms, our displeasure with the prospect of another special use permanent and zoning variances uh, being granted to allow a storage facility to be erected on the site of sixteen oh-one West Main Street. It is our opinion that such a use is first not in keeping with the character of our community. It is further our opinion that sales tax revenues from such facility would be negligible. It is further seen as doubtful such an enterprise would be sustainable, given there are at least ten other storage facilities with hundreds of units available, located within a five-mile radius of this location, and then there are the Route seventy-two I dot access issues, additionally, concerns regarding the ability of the site to be compliant with access road requirements for emergency vehicles, which are specified in chapter five of the village adopted fire code. Then their signed residents fervently request the board to vote against allowing the special use." The board that was in place prior to May of twenty twenty-three during the earlier sixteen oh-one special use application, uh, handled the entire process poorly. The board appeared to ignore planning and zoning commission findings of fact recommendation to deny the special use request. Of the fifteen items, A through O identified by the commission, only four represented for discussion by the board at the April third, twenty twenty-three meet. The others were apparently ignored. The board went on to review, amend, and vote on a draft ordinance permitting the special use for this occasion. The one on April third, twenty twenty-three was in the negative, however, a motion to reconsider was made during the April seventeen, twenty twenty-three meeting, and the subsequent vote reversed that decision. The board did not require a developer's agreement, which should at a minimum include a market study, cash flow statements detailing revenues and costs, how much of the village revenue we're gonna collect. The developed site plan, not just a concept, letters of credit, surety, bonding, utilities, fire service requirements, I dot approved access, uh, to the site, and other remedies for breach. The board further appears to have ignored current zoning requirements for the buffer yards in B two district, specifically where would the, where it was six-foot fence, is you, uh, provide twenty-five feet for a hundred lineal feet along a residential boundary. Contrary to what was stated in the April third, uh, twenty twenty-three board meeting, the hundred-foot buffer was a variation from the current zoning code. Based on the lot size, the minimum south buffer for this property should have been over a hundred and fifty feet, not a hundred feet, and the west buffer should have been a minimum twenty-five feet. Now, even if the requested storage facility project was canceled, we've not seen any record notification to that effect. The board failed to enforce B two zoning buffer requirement by allowing clearcutting far in excess of the, the, the permitted, that permitted under current zoning code, or even under. that permitted under current zoning code, or even under the special use ordinance. But, uh, further, the board failed to require remediation of the buffer. And we look forward to working with a new board uh, with the expectation of a board which is responsive to the electorate and not dismissive and acts in the best interest of our village.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next item on the agenda is trustee report. You're all in the parks. Mr. Harney.
Your comments I'll make under old business, but get it there. So go on.
Okay, thank you. Finance, Mr. Thorn.
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
Mark, water and sewer, Ms. Bow.
No report this week.
Thank you, Courtney. Police and Public Safety, Mr. Diat.
Uh, yes, a couple of things still to take care of. Uh. Change in officer status for James.
Rekia.
Rekia, I'm sorry. Moving him from, um, part-time status to full-time. Well, and this would take him to effect.
It, it, it'll be in the near future, so he is currently trained. We've got an officer that resigned. Um, Officer Rekia has, uh, exhibited an interest in taking that position. He has a current job that I he has to give two weeks' notice to, so he's got to give two weeks' notice, and then I got to come back to the board to get approval. It would delay everything and we would be short of full-time position then for an extended period of time. So I'm just trying to get some advanced approval to be able to move him to that position when the time is right. Department. Just advance plan.
So we'd like to make that change. His salary would be sixty thousand, six hundred and seventy two dollars and eighty two cents. When he moves to full-time.
Yeah. Correct.
Over the second.
Moved by, yeah, I guess I get it by McGuire to approve the, uh, change in status for Officer Rekia.
Rekia. Rekia.
Rekia. Going to have to rewrite that to Debbie Martin. Okay. Mr. Rekia from part-time to full-time with part-time salary of six hundred, sixty thousand, two hundred and
dollars.
Some change.
Six hundred and seventy two dollars and eighty two cents.
Okay, any other comments, questions, or discussion? Hang on, roll call, please. Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Brier.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Ms. Bow.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Six primary votes, no negative votes. Motion so carries. Thank you all.
Uh, Chief, I'd just like you to speak to some updates, sort of, you're doing.
Uh. Our garage here has been replaced, so they're now heat in the garage. Of course, it's been acres last week when it was replaced. But it's replaced, so it's, it's good and it's functioning. Um, I've been doing a traffic study on Joy Lane. Collected actually a lot of data. I was actually kind of surprised at the number of cars that are on Joy. Uh, and I'm trying to get kind of both directions, right, because basically it all. I. When I do traffic study, I try and do worst case scenario. And the bottom of the hills where the cars are going to be the fastest, so I don't get me like, in words, quote-unquote, worst data that I could possibly get. Um. Best data for me, worst case scenario. Um. I did a thirteen-day study out there in one direction. I'm currently gathering data on the other direction. Uh, that I want to get some more, but there's actually thirty nine hundred cars in thirteen days went down Joy. Uh, that's a lot of traffic on Joy. I was actually surprised by that number. Uh, the good news uh, is that the speeds are not ninety percent of the, of the vehicles that are traveling during this study are under thirty-five miles an hour, which is a good thing, especially at that section quote. Uh, there were some speeds that would guarantee you a ticket during the study. Um, and the nice thing is this studies allow me to kind of target certain times that I can put officers out there, which is really beneficial. Instead of just kind of scattergunning approach to it, we can actually put officers there when I can say that, yeah, this is where the majority of those cars are probably faster. As soon as I get that data back on the other direction, I'll work up the plan and start reminding people uh, at the appropriate times. Um. I was at the part-time, uh, academy graduation this past Saturday. Our cadet graduated, missed being valedictorian by less than a tenth of a percent, getting missed being valedictorian at last. Um, so I was ribbon of my seat and study hard sock. But he's going to be an excellent addition, excellent addition to our, uh, to our. Support unit. He's currently in training, asking a million questions, which is a great thing, so he's going to be a good addition. I think I've taken up enough time. Yes, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Chief. Uh, public buildings and environment.
Follow that up. No report.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Uh, Bill Anzoni and Ms. Thomas.
No report.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, old business, Mr. Harney. Caspi Road Study.
Yes, it's regarding the Von Kaski Road Study, Wesley D's request to lower the speed limit on Von Kaski to thirty-five miles an hour because of the park they put in and their desire that the expense of doing that be shared with Sleepy Hollow and the township. Uh, it's before the county now they're looking or they're looking at it at the county, and no discussion has taken place that I am aware of, of the expense of doing so, if it's even viable. So we'll stand by until we get some more information.